Who's gonna join like this?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, this Livingston City Commission meeting on September fifth is called to order. Roll call please.
Chair Newt.
Here.
Vice Chair Kale.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Friedman, Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Lyons is excused. So first on the agenda is general public comment. So individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction or advisory power. So if you're here to give general public comment for items not on the agenda, please feel free to come forward. We'll start with people in the room and then move online. Hi Patricia.
So some.
And you know how to start us off?
I do.
Thank you.
This is Greg O two oh forty St. Louis Street, Livingston. I just wanted, I know it's uh, it's not, it's not really a good item, which we would make comments. I wanted to use public comments to say a heartfelt thank you for the Warren McGee statue consideration tonight. I am so overwhelmingly grateful. Mary Michael says with me trying to get this done since two thousand sixteen. To me, she's our idea of Freddie Crimmington. I mean, her statuary, her sanctuary statue in part is so beautiful and all the work she does is so amazing. Uh, let me sit downtown building owner, business association, Montana railing can Dennis Washington, who was one of Warren's best friends. I want to so thank the evil board trustees and Laura McCarthy Cota and John Sullivan and the entire board trustees. I'm gonna give special thanks to get for his persistence in helping write the grant for this statuary. It is just really appreciated. I want to thank our city manager who comes here every time. Just so grateful to him and the city commission. And, and I want to express thank you that his Warren's family is here tonight, just to also to express their gratitude and a good friend that Warren used to call his cage and queen. And then thank the railroad workers of this community that built so much of this community and the people of Livingston. It is so wonderful that we are commemorating their existence in our town because they are the substance of which we became a community. So thank you. I just wanted to be sure that I said thank you to that.
Thank you for your generous comment tonight, Patricia. Are there other folks in the room that would like to offer a public comment? Welcome. You can just start with your name and address and then um, there's a signup sheet where you can write it down and then um, it four minutes is the, a lot of time and I'm sure Kale has a timer. I'm just letting you know, I know Patricia knows the drill, but yeah.
Correct, we do not.
Thank you.
Um, Beverly McGee Madsen, five oh two North B Street, Livingston.
Laura McGee Watch, and I currently live in College Station, Texas. Yeah, up for the summer, which has been my seventy seventh summer up here. Uh, will live here till I turn. I remember saying. But we're both here.
And we are thrilled and um just a little overwhelmed of about our uncle Warren and um his commitment to the city of Livingston was amazing. And um, San Juan Park wouldn't be what it is today had it not been for him and many other things. Won't, don't want to take up our performance. Thank you to everybody. Um, Patricia and Greg O is the only person that I really know. But obviously there was lots of people that had their hands in the, in the pot to, to get this done and, and all the paperwork and everything that is involved. So we are thrilled to um, to be a part of it. We are Livingston nights. From day of birth and um, so again, thank you for all that you have had to do. Thank you for what you are doing for the city of Livingston just right now and um, continues to know that there are lots of people that are really fond of the whole Livingston and um appreciate the work that you guys do.
And to know that this is going, I mean, I for our, even our great grandkids, which I have several that come back to Livingston every summer. So they will, they will hopefully forever make uh, Livingston a destination.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to offer a comment? My computer decided right now is when it needed to update. So I lost Zoom for a moment. Can you tell me if there's anybody online that wants to hear your comment?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So general public comment is closed and we'll move into consent items. We have, I'm sorry, did I miss anybody? Okay, thank you. There's five consent items on the agenda tonight. Are there any that commissioners want hold for discussion with?
Chair, um, I, I would like to pull uh, consent item E for us. Small tweet.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion for, or anybody else? Do we have a motion for items A through D?
Make motion approved action items, consent items, A through, I mean D.
I will second that motion for A through D.
So motion by Schwartz and a second by Kale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, no opposed. So four oh, motion passes um, by Sheriff Kale. You wanted consent item e pulled.
Yes, I think we need to make a brief uh, tweak to some language that will make sure that we're in compliance with all parties involved. And this is about the Warren McGee statute. So uh, thank you to I think the family already left, but thank you for, the family for coming in and speaking with us this evening. Um, and so on page thirty nine of the agenda, which is page three of the memorandum. Um, we need to make, I would suggest we make this change. The top of page three at the double I, the community foundation does not have any claim of ownership nor future financial or legal. So or legal is added obligation for the statute beyond the administration of the initial grant and it goes on from there. So I would make a motion that we pass. Um, consent item E with that change.
Is there a second?
Oh, that was motion.
Yeah, she just made a motion.
I'll second that.
Um, motion by Kale to amend item E to add or legal. And then a second by Schwartz. Mr. Gager, did you have anything that you wanted to add from the city's perspective?
No, I appreciate your consideration of the agreement and thank the depot and community foundation for uh, their help in the project.
Great. So is that motion work real?
It does. Absolutely, yes.
No, it's fine. It sounds like it works. I just like to check before we vote to make all of our lives easier. Are we ready to vote? So all in favor, say aye. So four zero, um, motion passes. For consent item E. So now we're moving into scheduled public, scheduled public comment. Department of Commerce Community Technical Assistant Consultant Introduction to Zoning Quote Evaluation Project, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. The item before us is a visit from uh, a team that has been generously actually hired by the state of Montana and I won't um, give too much away, but the State Department of Commerce has uh, included the city of Livingston in its community technical assistance program. And so um, we have a, a group of professionals who will help us kind of kick off the zoning code overhaul that uh, was included in the budget. And the, these folks will do the first step of comparing the Livingston Municipal Zoning Code sections with the growth policy to identify some areas of, of conflict or areas where we ought to pay attention um, as we embark upon that second phase. So um, I will turn it over.
Well, thank you for shares. Uh, my name is Cody Marks. I'm a planner with Great West Engineering. Based out of Helena, but I actually work from Sheridan, Montana. And I can't add much more detail than Grant has already.
Sorry.
It's perfect. I should have just pointed to the carpet on that. Uh, we've been contracted by the Department of Commerce on behalf of the city to do a review of your zoning code and compare it to your growth policy document, maybe some others that pulled into that as well. We're just looking for some inconsistencies, contradictions, things of that nature. So we've already begun our review. We'll continue that of the conclusion. You can expect to see an engagement plan from us, suggestions on ways to maybe amend and bring things into compliance and where they're speaking to each other and supporting each other instead of working against each other. And, and those, I will make a note that none of those suggestions would be mandated, of course, because we were working for you, but it would just be guidance moving forward. So we're aiming, I think, to have something to you um, late all early March or so, before the new year, for sure. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have questions. I will start with Mr. Gager though. Um, would you mind giving us a preview of what this process might be like? I imagine when the Department of Commerce and Cody Marsk, or thank you, are done, that there's a process that goes with staff before it comes to us. Is that?
Um, yes, so for the, the larger zoning overhaul
Yeah.
process, um, we will create a uh, request for proposal similar to what we did for the downtown master plan and work through a procurement process that way to bring on a consultant and that will guide the city um, through this zoning overhaul. And so the, the document that um, Cody and her team will put together um, will inform the work of that consultant. And then when that uh, team is brought on board, there will be a community engagement process and also a technical review of, of the zoning code as well. Um, and then because that is a text amendment, that will work its way through the zoning commission um, up to you folks.
And so when this um, evaluation is done, that'll, I'm imagining that that goes to you and staff before it gets presented to us. Is that? Okay, great. So we'll see some sort of version of it that
Oh, absolutely.
commission appropriate, but you all will be able to go into the weeds maybe bit more.
And, and I actually imagine that I believe Cody, you had mentioned that you folks will be back when it's complete to present their findings. Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, other commissioners, do you have questions?
No, but it would be nice to, you know, everything, everything in a row.
I think we've been talking about this for at least, how many years at least? At least.
Yeah, the conflict, you know, this conflicting back, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say we're excited. Thank you.
Taking up a ton of staff time to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, yeah, we appreciate when people work with staff. Yeah. So that we get uh, well refined, whatever the output is by the time it makes it dust. So thank you for being here.
Exciting too. Got a great crew. So.
Yeah, we feel pretty lucky in Livingston. Thank you. All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you guys.
And by the way, I think the whole community will be excited, not just the people here, that people in this town really care about code and all of these things. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Are we ready for ordinances?
Sure.
All right. Are you ready for ordinances?
We are ready for ordinances, yes.
So first up is ordinance number three zero four two and ordinance of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter twenty six, article five, sections twenty six point ninety and twenty six point ninety one of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Street Maintenance and Street Lighting Districts. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. The item before you is the second reading of the ordinance that um, this conversation really started in, in December, not long after I joined the city. And um, the, the effect of this ordinance will be to change the um, way that, that the street and street lighting uh, maintenance district uh, costs are assessed. And a, as you know, um, currently it is on the size of the lot um, with uh, certain limitations on, on the um, amount assessed for developed or undeveloped lots. Um, and the, the proposal here is to move to a uh, assessment method that's based on valuation. Um, a, as noted in the staff report, there are um, several different methods that are allowed uh, under state code. Um, including parcel size, street frontage, uh, trip generation, uh, equal apportionment and, and the, of course, the, the method we're recommending, which is based on taxable value of, of a parcel. And so um, as this is the, the second reading of the ordinance, I uh, will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Any clarifying questions?
No.
All right. Um, so let's first move to a motion then on ordinance three zero four two.
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance three zero four two and authorize the chair to sign.
Sure.
So motion by Kale and a second by Friedman. We will now open it up to general pub, or not general public comment, comment on ordinance three zero four two. Are there folks in the room that want to give comment on this? I will now look online. Is there anyone online that would like to give comment on this? I am not seeing anyone. All right. So public or yeah, public comment on ordinance three zero four two is now closed. Commissioners.
Four.
Is there anything that you folks want to say?
Um, nothing that hasn't, wasn't said in the first uh, reading and stuff is explained very well and, and uh, while just generally I more equitable, equitable way to go. If we have, and stated was that, you know, unbuildable loss in the day and plus. So based on valuation makes a whole lot of sense. Well, I'd trade our end to be, thank you.
I agree. I think we've had a few conversations about that, by the same moving in that direction.
Great. All right. Now you know, let's vote. Roll call please.
Chair Newt, Vice Chair Kale.
Or.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Schwartz.
Or. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is ordinance three zero four three. An ordinance of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter thirty of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning by adding new section thirty point four seven entitled planned unit developments and providing upper peeler saving severability and effective date. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. The item before you is a continuation from the last meeting when we um, presented the, the planned unit development ordinance. And um, there was, there was some discussion amongst the commission and um, a, a request for, for staff to go and seek some, some feedback on, on the ordinance and, and some specific issues within the ordinance. And uh, Director Severson and myself um, had the opportunity to speak with, with several different groups and um, a, as we did so, um, it became clear that um, that, that there was uh, maybe a divergence of opinions um, out, out there in the, in the marketplace. And so um, rather than, than us kind of arbitring some of those opinions, we thought that perhaps it would be productive to come back to the commission and seek commission input and have a, a bit of a conversation on, on some things that we heard um, from the, the housing community and the development community. Um, again, get your feedback and, and then ideally we would uh, make the modifications and, and come back to you folks with a revised ordinance that, that we could do a first reading of. So.
Uh, I have two questions.
Yeah.
Did you want to put this computer as a co-host? So if you present, I can see if.
Absolutely.
And then um, I assume that Director Severson's gonna share some information on that. So when it's done before we converse, it might be nice to check in with you and see exactly where you're looking for feedback from us. Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we'll listen attentively. Thank you. Did any of you have anything you wanted to add or ask before? Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure you guys all got this um, public comment about the PUD ordinance. Um, supported you by, you know.
It, it came in very late this afternoon, so it's um.
I do not see it. Thank you.
And then there was also one in your packets from um, HRDC. But yeah, as um, City Manager Gager said, we um, did the feedback that you provided at the August first meeting um, about some additional outreach, maybe some developers to, to get a better sense of whether the um, incentives that were included in the, in those ordinance were attractive enough um, to actually to, to get some of those public benefits we were looking for. You know, we had the incentives that um, the developer incentives and bonuses and then the public benefits table. Um, and so also the direction into um, big list of affordable housing components, um, just to get a better idea of how realistic some of those things were. So um, when I hit the next slide. Um, so yeah, so some of the, the suggested revisions that came out of these meetings that we had um, uh, I'll bullet it here. So um, the, the direct ordinance that we brought you was a minimum lot size of one acre. Uh, some of the for housing components and, and uh, developers that have worked on affordable housing elsewhere in Montana said that, you know, their suggestion is to min uh, bring that size down, decrease it to a half acre. Um, just to allow for again, a little even more flexibility. Um, if people want to work with that, it's, it's a pre-involved process. So if you, you know, if somebody really wants to go down that and, and wants to go through that and, and and provide us all the information and have that back and forth and, and the public process for a half acre. And I think the idea is maybe leave it up to the developer. If that works for them, I don't know that we would actually ever see that. But after I get through this list, I do have a map showing you right now what is um, vacant property vacant according to the assessor. Um, uh, one acre or more in Livingston. And then we had a map made that was a half acre or more. So you can see the, the differences that we're talking about, the new areas that would open up. Um, another suggestion was to allow beauties in all zoning districts, not just residential. The ordinance we brought to you was for just focusing on residential zoning districts. Um, and uh, the suggestion is, is why limit it? Why not just allow it since it is sort of a um, a, a zoning district overlay or even replacement, if you will. Um, you know, we're looking at each proposal or we're going to be on, on its own merits for that site. So um, one of the suggestions again was really, why not just allow it to be any district and then we can look at the project as it comes in and see if we think it's appropriate for that area. Um, another suggestion, the next two actually kind of go hand in hand. One was we had um, because we had it in only residential districts, we had a requirement to include some sort of commercial use in the PUD uh, at a scale that was appropriate for that PUD. Um, some of the feedback we got was that some developers may not be interested in trying to look at commercial uses. Maybe that's not their thing. Um, maybe they really are more focused on the housing, the affordable housing component. Um, and so the suggestion was remove it as a requirement, the commercial use. And then make that commercial use actually a public benefit. And I think that this would be especially um, attractive for us as a public benefit, maybe on the north side where we really don't have a lot of commercial uses. And so everybody has to constantly cross the tracks to get to any sort of um, commercial establishments, maybe allowing a developer to provide that. Maybe the suggestion was maybe start off with five percent of square footage of developed of the developed ADU being a commercial in use. Um, then they can select one of the developer incentives. So no longer would it be required. Instead, it would be a public benefit. Um, and again, it's, it's their choice. If they don't want to choose that public benefit, they can go to a different one. They can get the, the waiver of impact fees, that kind of thing. Um, another suggestion was um, currently as the ordinance that we brought you was to recommend a developer density bonus uh, increase up to twenty five percent of the base zoning district. Some of the people that we spoke with developers said to make it even more attractive, they would recommend a density bonus um, up to fifty percent of the base zoning district. Um, and then finally, something that uh, I checked in apparently, this is an option already for subdivisions. But for a PUD that wasn't subdivided, allowing cash and lieu for that open space, that increased open space benefit. So rather than, than having to provide that actual open space, active open space development, they could give us cash and say, we're gonna there's a formula you figure out for how much money that's worth. They give it to us and then the city can use it elsewhere on maybe, maybe different developers put that cash in lieu and then we can work with our uh, trails, our open space plans and figure out where might be the most appropriate place to use that money. Um, because it may not be in the location where this PUD is going, that that would get the best and, and most use. So um, great. If you want to hit the next two slides, um, please. The first one again is just showing, and I don't know if there's a way to zoom in so they can still see it online, but um, this is one acre parcels are larger that are vacant currently. They have a, a deeper outline. Um, uh, I'm sorry. I know it's kind of a little hard to see, but this is kind of um, uh, we worked with Stephen Jay on this.
Can I avoid this just so that we know? Like, so you're.
Anything with that darker outline and the colors? Yeah. So the darker outline are those parcels that are one acre or more as, as, as per the assessor. And but then this also shows you color wise which zoning districts they're in. So this is what we're talking about. A lot of it, again, on the south side is, is our one um, or our two, I think. Um, yeah, the, the parcel that's on the north, across from the hospital on the north side of the highway, that is our one. So if that, that makes sense how it's coming. As you can see, obviously the CBD, there's nothing, you know, there's, there's no one acre parcels that are ready to be developed that are vacant.
Except for that one on the right, except for the one right on the northeast corner of that map.
Uh, in, in, in the CBD?
I think that's zone CBD if I remember correctly.
Oh, oh, yeah, that, yes, you're correct. Sorry. That is um, far north, uh, far northeast. It's, it's within the preserve, the, the one that went to the Galesdon Preserve. Um, that is, yes, that's all part of one property, um, all under one ownership. But that is, you're correct. That is uh, zone CBD. Um, and then the next map, you just kind of get an idea where these are again on the perimeter is the next map. Um, is cut it off. Um, there it is. Uh, it's outlined in yellow. Um, this shows you there's a few more now that we're looking at. Um, especially on the north side. I think there's some, some more spots far left. Um, this isn't a perfect map setup. Some of these may already have um, be planned for developments. They just haven't um, the assessor hasn't changed the status. But this is kind of giving you an idea of where where these are and how much more this may open up for the half acre. I'm not sure that it's a huge difference. And again, these are it for individual properties. If there's nothing to say that that two properties owned by two different people that are less than half acre, when if somebody bought it at the same time and merged, it would be one property. So it's, this isn't a perfect perfect map, but it gives you an idea. Do you have any questions? Or?
Yeah. And so to to be clear here, commissioners, we, like I said, staff looks forward to to bringing the this back to you. Although Jen, I do note that there was the, we talked a little bit about the different AMIs with with some of the the folks out there.
Yes, I'm not sure what I did. I apologize. I think it goes in a separate section. Thank you. In the ordinance we brought you for the the developer incentive, there were there were two kind of tied to the affordability. One of them was a complete waiver of a one-to-one basis for impact fees for any affordable unit that was at sixty percent or less of the AMI. And then that also counted towards anything above sixty percent. I want to say it was between eighty, sixty to a hundred, two hundred. Then that counted towards your residential density bonus. The developers that we spoke with, especially ones that have done these affordable housing developments and included affordable housing in some of their developments elsewhere in Montana, said that that is just really, really it's almost impossible right now to to make a sixty percent AMI unit work. They also brought up the fact that it really it should be looked at differently for rentals, the AMI percentages, average, the area median income versus for buyers. So their suggestion was to make it a minimum eighty percent for rentals and a hundred and twenty percent, I believe, for for buyer-owned units. So that there, because there is a difference. And again, I I'm still kind of hoping that I can have some more discussion with the Affordable Housing Department to talk to because I don't understand all of the details of it yet, but it seemed they they were in agreement with those developers because we were, I one of the meetings all together. That it just, it's really not usable to 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 try to get a developer to provide a sixty percent AMI unit. And it just, it doesn't work. And so the thought behind raising that to eighty percent for the renters and then doing a separate area median income percentage for owner units is, you know, it it doesn't hit that, you know, affordable, the low income affordable that we would like. But at least we get something out of it, you know, for right now, it's it's the thought was that if we push too hard for that sixty percent, we may not get anything, may not get any bites from developers. And so, you know, I think it's 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 up to to the commission to say, do we want to, you know, start at this level and then see what happens? Maybe the market changes, maybe the incentives or the tax credits make it so that it's you know, more of a possibility to get that sixty percent? Or do we want to try to do that now? And see, see what happens. So that was brought up. The other thing about the affordability I think was a really good suggestion was that there's there's a couple of different places that were recommended to sort of check for. One was when the unit goes on the market. But then again, whether it's for rental or for sale, but then it really needs to, they said, what they're seeing, at least in Bozeman is, you know, these units are marked as affordable, they're checked once, but then when they go for resale or re-rental, nobody's really able to follow up on that. And it's really important to keep that in that deed restricted once it changes hands to make sure that it continues moving through the system as an affordable unit, a deed restricted affordable unit. It's not to say that that we're not recommending to have people that that stay there and their their income situation changes to have them move. That's not the intent of this, at least from staff's perspective and from the affordable housing folks that we talked to, but once it changes hands, to make sure that it continues to stay at that level. Thanks for allowing me that.
No, no, I thank you, Jen. I appreciate that. And so commissioners, the 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 goal of of tonight's conversation really is to help us refine the the ordinance. And so on in in Jen's staff report on page fifty one of the packet, there are six items there that under the heading discussed revisions to draft PUD ordinance. And so Jen's outlined those and and we would appreciate any input you have to us.
Thank you. I would like to just take it one at a time so that we can ask our clarifying questions just one at a time and give feedback. Does that make sense?
I'm one through six.
That way we're not jumping around all over the place. We can do one questions, comments, two questions, comments.
I think Jen explained it pretty well. I don't need any clarifying of those.
Okay, but that way we can talk about it. And then at the end, do you think that it'd be better to do public comment before we discuss then? Might make more sense to the public comment first and then the commission can discuss, even though we're not taking action.
Absolutely.
Does that sound good?
Absolutely.
Great. So I apologize, it might be a lot of up and down, but but we'll start, we'll start with public comment. So if the public decides to comment, I would welcome you to get comfortable and listen along with us. And then at the end, we'll discuss and probably be needing your help. Yes, thank you, Jen. Okay, so we'll start with public comment. Remember, we're not taking action, but anything that was just mentioned by our planning director, you can comment on just the things in this PUD, please. So we'll start with people in the room. Hi, Tom. And then we'll go online. I see Ken, your hand up. We'll do everyone in the room first and then we'll come online.
Yeah, my name's Tom. We rock one twenty-two and a half. So Second Street downtown Levingston. I'm a board member of Friends Park County. And as some of you know, I've developed a couple of buildings and I'm really interested in this subject and making it work. I, when I originally read this thing and started sort of hypothetically running numbers, it just seemed like everything was there just wasn't enough incentive for this thing to really work. And I really gratified to see you guys sort of looking at that. And I hope you take a really hard, sort of rigorous look at that through some, maybe even through some economic consult to make sure that things are are things are feasible and there there really is an incentive to do that. It's, it would be a big deal for a developer to deed restrict their 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 property to do this. But I think I'm really encouraged at what I'm seeing in terms of what you guys are looking at. I'm not sure, I didn't sort of get all those like removing that commercial consultant requirement is big. I mean, as somebody who's developed some commercial property, the residential really supports it. And it's kind of a drag on the number. So these are all, these are all positive things. So I keep going. And I think my colleague Ken Cochran will have some, he's online, so he'll have some comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to comment? After Tom has done, then yeah, then each of you, I would welcome them up. Thank you.
They need to real regular slow.
Thanks, Tom. Welcome. If you could just start with your name and address, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Dan Downing. I live at eleven Cotwood Lane here in Levingston, Montana. You know, as a homeowner, I kind of feel like I've been stabbed in the back. You know, we we bought this house planning to retire here in this community. We've lived here for twelve years. By the rules, the zoning rules, and then all of a sudden, oh, we're going to put a whole bunch of low-income housing next to your property. I don't think that's fair. You know, and I think we're at the verge of it's time to sell our house and get the hell out of here. So that's kind of what I'm saying. I don't think this is right. I understand low-income housing. I lived in TB at one time. I lived in Rattlefield Travers. We we scrimmed to the same to buy a home here. And I don't think this is right. That's all I got.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm part B of that household, Martha Downing from Levingston. And looking at your slides, you guys have done a nice place, I think. Concentration here. The very first thing, the intent, more efficient use of land. Just kind of made the Heron My Next stand up. More efficient, meaning more people in the same area. That's the goal of this. You know, we have a town of seven thousand, let's make it a town of eleven thousand, something like that. And yeah, as Dan mentioned, when you buy a house, you look at the zoning and you understand what conditions are in your neighborhood. And you assume that because of zoning, those conditions will remain. There will be a same population density. You know, the same number of people going up and down the road, the same number of corridors slamming in the morning. And if you change the rules so that more people live in a smaller area, quality of life takes a nosedive. You know, and you've taken away from the people who live there, the value of of what they bought because you changed that criteria. Yeah, high, high density neighborhoods are something that'll let people build on.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha. Is there anyone else in the room? Patricia, the podium is between us. Are you? Okay, all right. I'm gonna go to folks online then. Ken, Ken Cochran, welcome.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
They won't let me show my face. I would if I could, but I'm blocked. So good evening. I am Ken Cochran, President of Friends of Park County. My address is sixty Majestic Ridge Trail, Livingston. Friends of Park County applauds the city's work on the plan unit developments as part of its implementation of the twenty twenty-one growth policy. We endorse the concept of allowing developers the opportunity to balance higher densities of residential development with provisions for market affordable housing and increased open space. A well-crafted ordinance can allow the city to harness the rising demand and prices for housing in the city to increase the range and price, prices of housing and provide additional open space. My fellow board member, Tom Blue Rock, has offered thoughts about the adequacy of affordable housing incentives and the change in the mandates for a share of commercial development. I offer two other points. First, Friends of Park County's planning principles, which you can find on our website, spread stress the importance of clear and objective definitions, standards and criteria in land use regulation. Objective standards ease the work of staff and decision makers, provides transparency and fairness to all parties, and assures consistency in application. Just as importantly, they help deliver the desired outcomes on the ground. Some refinements can and apparently are going to be made to this draft ordinance, which will greatly increase its clarity. Second, you might consider adding the provision of voluntary conservation easements in the ETJ as a public benefit that entitles a landowner or developer to additional density. This would help implement your policies for the ETJ without requiring adoption of zoning for the ETJ. We can offer other suggestions in writing to your staff if they would be interested. Once again, we applaud and endorse your efforts to implement the twenty twenty-one growth policy through this draft ordinance. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Ken. And it was nice to see you. Thanks for coming on video also. Are there other folks online that would like to share comments on ordinance three zero four three? Not seeing anybody. Always like to give an extra moment, knowing that it can be fumbly online. All right, I don't see anyone. So public comment for ordinance three zero four three is now closed. And commissioners, we did hear some comments. I would like to still move through these one through six. And if folks wanted to address some of the things or ask questions about anything that the public brought up, we can just do that. Does that work for everybody? Okay, so first up is decrease, decrease minimum PUD size to one-half acre reduced from one acre. So remembering that the last iteration we saw was one acre. So where do we want to begin? Does anybody want to start with comments on that? What are your thoughts?
I I'm comfortable with that. I like that.
Okay.
Are you?
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm just wondering, you know, for grants or grant to Jen. At the half acre, is it really doable? And are we going to waste a whole lot of staff time for staff looking, you know, like going over something that's maybe not going to get there that staff puts a whole lot of time and effort into that we just don't get there. And it, you know, I think that we have a planning department of one, hopefully at some point, one and a half. You know, like I'm I'm just curious, like if it seems.
No, I I appreciate the question, Vice Chair Cale. And, you know, I think the 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 map that Jen showed indicates that there are, there are a few half acre parcels throughout the city. And and when we think about R2 zoning, which allows, you know, twelve and a half, almost thirteen units, primary units within an acre, and and then think about a half acre parcel, you know, which is is about six units that would be allowed by the base zoning. You know, you're looking at an extra unit to two units. And so there is, you know, some, you know, benefit to the housing stock through that. And, you know, I think when we compare this new process to the current subdivision process, I I don't think it's it's that much more cumbersome for for a staff standpoint is is what we've kind of figured. And so I I don't have concerns from a staff capacity standpoint by reducing us down to a half acre minimum. And I look at Jen and she she seems okay with it also.
Thoughts on half acres? Did you want to share anything?
No.
Not yet?
No.
Okay. Um, I, one question I have, and I, maybe it was implicit, but I want it to be explicit, I guess, is this PUD process would also apply to landowners or developers that have properties to redevelop as well. So and that's presumably not on the map or all the one-half to one acre parcels that could be redeveloped. Okay, just just knowing there might be some that are in that spot that we don't think about front of mind. Okay. Um, so what the, what staff needs from us is an opinion on this. We have Commissioner Schwartz saying he's comfortable with half an acre.
And I, when I get a chance, I'll add.
Go ahead and add to it.
I don't see a lot happening with PUD. Personally, but I'd say I have the option. You know, the available ability there, me, you know, I'm not a developer, but to me, it's I don't know how I'm going to do it, but I like the idea of the option. Trying to maximize what we have here.
Do you have thoughts or do you think, are you for this, opposed to it? Where are you at? You're good with half acre? Okay.
So I I'm an honest, I can go either way. I think I agree with you.
Yeah.
You know.
I see your trepidation, but.
You know, like I, I, it seems like a hard ask to do it in a half an acre, but I suppose if someone's very creative and, you know, it's then why not give them the opportunity? It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be approved either, which is the other thing to remember that this was not a when somebody in any of this, when when someone attempts to do that, which I think is When, when someone attempts to do that, which I think is important for folks to understand too, is that this is not a slam dunk for anyone, like this is not. They're gonna go through the process, they're gonna see if it's gonna work, staff is gonna work with them. They're gonna have to reach out to their neighbors and go through an entire process, so. The PUD is not just a green light to develop on any piece of property. In the, in the city. This is a process and I, I'm sure there will be some that won't make it through. So I think that that's an important thing to remember as well.
Thank you.
Just. Uh, so I mean, I, I, I think that if, if our planning department and, and senior manager thinks that happening, there seems like a, a wise decision, I would be okay with that.
No, that's great, I didn't know what sometimes it's hard, cause like you said, we're not making a decision, these are individual decisions, this is a, a policy conversation. So how we feel when, or what we think when there is something in front of us will depend on what the thing is in front of us and what staff recommends, et cetera, so. Okay, and the other thing I want to acknowledge is that these six items, some of them are quite tightly interrelated and so our conversation will likely evolve as we move through the list. Okay, I'm also open to half an acre.
Okay.
As we move through this conversation, knowing that that, all the things are already conditioned, okay. So next on our list is, are you good with that first?
Yes, thank you.
Next on our list is number two, allow PUDs in all zoning districts. Not only residential districts, so the previous iteration we saw was just R two and R three. And we discussed that at the previous, during the previous conversation, two meetings, two regular commission meetings back. So who would like to begin with this one? Commissioner Shorts.
How's that working in R one? It just doesn't, right, R one.
That's what we talked about last time.
Not allowed.
Uh, tha- that, that's correct, so we, in some of these conversations that we've had over the last several weeks, there were some folks that actually expressed interest in. The, the mixed use zone and, and some of those areas, there are some larger unsubdivided parcels that are zoned outside of the, the residential area.
Okay, yeah, so that's.
And, uh. Sorry, if I could.
You have.
Yeah, please.
Question.
Jen, was, was there anything you'd like to add that, that I may have missed?
Not sure, I'm. Maybe following.
Well, let me ask it again, it just says all.
Zoning districts.
The way it's.
All residential districts. That means one would be included.
Anywhere that residential dwellings are allowed. We are proposing. To, we're doing, and on August first, what we brought you was to require that PUDs were only allowed in those zones. After the meetings we've had. The suggestion is to, rather than just restrict it to residential zoning districts, to allow it in all zoning districts. And I think the reason for that is. You know, again, highway commercial, I'm not expecting to see it in highway commercial because it's pretty pervasive zoning district as it is. You know, CBD doesn't have a minimum lot size, I wouldn't necessarily, or height, so I wouldn't expect to see it there. But just again, the mixed use, maybe even neighborhood commercial, if it is appropriate, the entire package as it comes. Through, that's when we'll look at it, but to restrict it just to residential districts. Some of the feedback we got was that would be kind of concerning because. It, it, it limits. A, a developer's ability to say, hey, we want to do this, we have this great project, but maybe the land that we have isn't in one of the residential zoning districts. So, that's, that's the whole thing, again, it's, it's still the consideration with the whole package, you know, of, of what they're giving us. What they're getting in return for incentives, we look at all the uses, you're able to look at it more qualitatively through this application versus just a regular subdivision, if you will. But rather than just require it be residential. And you're right, this is sort of tied to that reason to take the commercial requirement out of it. Take the commercial requirement out of it, then the incentive to put it in residential districts to sort of increase neighborhood commercial uses. Isn't really there anymore. Is that?
Yeah, but we won't worry about that one yet, we'll just focus on this, but yes, I know, I see you moving ahead to number three, I'm tracking you. But I want to just keep us on number two right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, that's, yeah, same. And if that doesn't mean a PUD would go on R one, but.
Right now, we're just, the previous iteration was just R two and R three, we talked about.
All of them, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Did you have something you wanted to?
I was gonna say.
You're done? You're up, if you want to go next.
So I'm looking at, this is from August first. And from August first, it said, PUD would be allowed in R one or two, or, so R one was included initially.
It, it was in our initial recommendation and then the conversation of the commission was that it was. Not quite suitable for R one for several reasons, including the environmental reasons. That kind of underlied why some of the, the R one zoning existed, migratory paths and, and whatnot, and so. The, the commission had, it sounded like, in, in our understanding, had come to an agreement that R one, PUDs would not be allowed in R one and so. Apologize for the lack of clarity here, I, I think we, we still based on, on your past direction would not consider it for R one or would not bring back an ordinance. That includes it, PUDs i- in R one.
Yeah, that's.
And so, yeah, you know, I, I, I guess, yeah, we, we could have used a little clarity in this bullet point too, that, that we were actually more considering. Keeping R one out of it, but rather than limit it simply to R two and R three, opening it up for those, those mixed use neighborhood commercial and, and those other zones there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to ask or add? If you have something to, yeah, just go ahead, thank you for that. So R two MH is still, would still be included in R MO, would still be included, knowing that when the code revision and all of these things happen. Some of these things might be clarified to be more consistent.
Exactly.
But functionally, they're very similar right now, there's just a couple of differences between them, okay. And. If you, if you're not tracking what I'm saying, let me know, but I'm assuming you're all tracking since you, okay. I do not think that is appropriate to put PUDs in all zoning districts across the board, I think that there are some places we don't allow housing because it's not compatible land use with the area. I think. One of the things we talked about at the previous meeting was that housing goes. That P, I think that Commissioner Lyons was talking a bit about this and. I'm sure I will not perfectly summarize his comments, but. I, he talked a bit about existing zoning and. How when you're talking about housing, it makes sense to put it where residential is allowed now. Because that's really one of the major goals here, so for example. If we have something. Two things that have come up during the growth policy conversations was like ag land. Wanting to preserve ag land and open space. So if folks don't, if folks in our community have already clarified over and over that they don't want housing on ag land, for example, or industrial land. Land that's stone, zone for industry. Is not something, not a place where people want to put housing. For obvious reasons, so I don't think that it makes sense to open it to everything. Now. We could talk a bit about what that means for mixed use, because that's a new zone, which is primarily residential, but also allows commercial. And then neighborhood commercial also. Allows. Housing and commercial. Yeah, and it's restricted commercial, so like a highway commercial would be, I think one of the major differences is highway commercials say allows like drive-throughs. And I think mixed use does not, and that's one thing we've talked about, transportation impacts. So that I would be open to that conversation about highway, not highway commercial, but like. Neighborhood commercial or mixed use zoning, but I don't think that it's appropriate for everywhere. And a developer would know that when. You know, that I, that land was not suitable for housing when they see that it's.
Kind of go where they can sell.
Industry, yeah, so for industry, so. What do folks think about what I just said? Or other things?
So your recommendation. If I can just clarify or sum it up would be. The residential that we. Identify as well as neighborhood commercial and mixed use. But not the others.
I mean, that seems like a compatible land use based on our previous concerns, but I want to hear what you guys, what you all think too. But I don't think opening up every place up for housing is what people in the East End want.
Because I think about the future land use now, and right, some of those areas during the growth policy, there was that discussion about. You know, we keep this as open and cost rural, you know, so to open that up for development. Or potential, again. Potential development doesn't, right, necessarily.
You want to restrict it on highway commercial? Or you don't want PUD even? On highway commercial? Industrial, I didn't understand, but.
Would, I don't remember everything that's in the zoning table, I think it comes down to compatible land use, I think highway commercial.
Residential is a lot of my thoughts, right?
Loud, anyway, alright, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, what do you think, what do you think, do you think that makes sense to put? I think we have housing in a lot of our highway commercials.
Sure, yeah, and you might wind up with a better result if you gave somebody that option.
It's an option and. Believe me, that I can do it, they can't. Right from, you know, I just.
And honestly, like part of what I'm thinking about too, and I'm sure you all are thinking the same things, is it's about. When we talk about efficient land use, we're also talking about efficient use of resources, including like. Taxpayer resources, like where do we have the infrastructure and where can our infrastructure support, knowing that our most expensive bills tend to be. Things that we can't see under the ground, like the water pipes and sewer pipes, so. Putting things where we can support the growth is a net benefits to the community cost wise. In terms of efficiency as well. So do you think including highway commercials, neighborhood commercial and mixed use makes sense?
Yes.
But not R one and not the other things.
Or. Yeah, but I think, I think that makes sense, yeah.
Are we all on the same page? Are you tracking this?
I am tracking it, I just would, if I could just clarify, I, I misspoke earlier, there's no residential allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone, so that. It seems like that one would be one that would fall more towards that, that industrial, where we wouldn't consider PUDs.
Thank you, so, then the only neighborhood commercial I can remember off the top of my head is zone neighborhood commercial, but. It's never been redeveloped, and so it's still, yeah. Okay, so.
That's where I'm comparing, right?
There's a little section on the north side too. Just a few blocks right on Front Street, but it's all housing, it's never been redeveloped, right? Nope, between the tracks. Oh, it's just like. I think that's right, is that?
I was gonna say, you can actually. But I, I, I think I.
Of a block strip, I think, facing. Nope.
Right, is.
Can you, can you share the screen, please? And then I'll see if I can do the Vanna thing like Carrie. Although, I don't know, if I'm being scared of me, I'd never, will never be, yeah, there was an auction going one time, yeah.
So it's, it's actually this parcel, right?
I think. Yeah, can you zoom in, please?
I can.
I think there's.
There is, there is, there's one over by Front Street, look at.
I thought there was some like, right?
Yeah, it's right there, you can see it, let me back up.
Here somewhere. I thought there was like half of a block rate, or like half of a block this way to the alley.
Oh, yeah, there is down over there.
Right over front.
Down over here, but, so.
Yeah, and then right above where it sits, Southwest Front Street, see there's a little piece right there.
Oh, and then there's like a block right here. I thought there was some right here, but maybe I'm mistaken, I thought there was some right here, maybe that was on the future land use map.
That little blue one is where.
Right, I might be mixing up with the future land use map, sorry, thank you. Okay, so neighborhood commercial currently does not allow housing, so should we take that off the list then? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So those ones with mixed use and highway commercial.
And that's all we're adding to the list.
Or define.
Are we all on the same page?
We went on that one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you tracking all this?
Thank you.
Okay. Number three. Remove requirement to include commercial use in PUD. Instead, make commercial use a public benefit. Who would like to start this one?
Well, if, if we're gonna add mixed use and highway commercial. It makes that commercial piece a little redundant.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Um. I, but it makes sense to put it as the. Public benefit. That would encourage that, because I would, I do want to encourage some of that as well.
Right, I wonder. I wonder. About like larger parts, this is what I've been thinking about, larger parcels. Versus smaller parcels, like a half of an acre is different than say like five acres of greenfield space. And so, or even like five acres of redevelopment, and so I wonder. About commercial use, if it could be. But I guess that wouldn't be helpful, because then somebody could just cut up their parcel to avoid it, right, and do it in. If they wanted to get around it. So you all think you're leaning towards not making it a requirement and just a commercial use as a public benefit?
Yeah.
I wish we had that table from the last, it's probably in here.
Uh, we have the, the slides from the last meeting are available.
So, I can just add like letter E to the public benefits table on page sixty one. And then it would be five percent of new square footage of PUD as. A public benefit.
Exactly, yes.
I feel comfortable with that, do you all feel comfortable with that? Yeah. Commissioner Shorts too, you feel comfortable with that, like adding?
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're good with that. Uh, number four, require eighty percent minimum AMI for rentals. And hundred twenty percent AMI for owner units to obtain incentives. And so that's up from a minimum of sixty percent AMI. With rental, rentals and owner units, not delineated.
Can I have a question?
Yes, please.
And this is directed at. Mr. Giger said Jen was something she had said, and I just wanted to clarify. Jen, you said that when you were speaking with the developers and some of the housing experts. That they, that the housing experts also agreed that. Sixty seemed too low, was that what I heard, I just wanted to clarify.
The indication and the, the discussion was that, and especially right now, I, I think in, in the cost to build in Livingston. That you, it was unlikely that a developer could make a sixty percent AMI network, so, and all that means is. They wouldn't be able to take advantage of that, that, that one to one. Uh, impact fee, however, they. They liked that incentive, so, and, and if, if we're, if we're trying to attract them. Then they found that attractive, just not at the sixty percent level, does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah.
Would this be the area we had talked about as well? Um, you're talking that you delineate the rental and the ownership, but this would be the area in which we would wanna put a deed restriction in as well. For those, right, and that would be included in that. Okay, I was new. Okay, just wanted to double check. You go, we finish. I'm, I think I'm good for the minimum yield for the time.
Um, I would looking to include a deed restriction.
Yes.
That way though.
That was actually.
Yeah, I'd like a little more clarification.
Yeah, uh so so a- absolutely, Commissioner Schwartz. Um, basically, the um original proposal was. That each deed restricted affordable um unit that was created would allow for um increased density of up to. That while we allowed it actually up to twenty five percent increased density, um and so. Uh, yes, they would be deed restricted whether they were for rent or for sale and.
In perpetuity.
Yep, and and the the point that that um Director Severson made earlier about um having um. Income um verifications done at the point that it turns over, that would be a a function that. Um, the city would manage as part of the the deed restriction process, um and there's also other. You know, contractors or other arrangements out there that to do that income verification.
And that's not happening both, I'm like, I gather, or not being tracked as well.
Uh, tha- that was one of the issues that was brought to us, yes, that the compliance monitoring after the fact. Wasn't necessarily envisioned at the time of unit creation, and so. There were units that, you know, had affordability measures attached to them that were not necessarily enforced or enforceable.
So the public benefit was lost.
Lost. Okay. Alright, I'm I'm good with that.
Well, I'll take a turn.
I'm good with that.
Um, the first thing I wanna say is I understand people's concerns with change, and that's real. And I want to. Uh, you know, I know not all people make it to all meetings. I know some people make it to most meetings, but I know not. All people make it to all meetings, and so I wanna um. I wanna clarify that one of the things that we've talked about too is um. What these mean in numbers, and it's not. We spend a lot of time deliberating and talking about it, but. Um, based on where our zoning is now and. These potential changes. It's not as significant as it may seem in the big picture, based on what the baseline zoning allows right now today in Livingston, what people can do today in Livingston. Um, not all developers choose to do the maximum build that they can do, but what has been allowed for quite some time. Might be more than what people currently see in their neighborhood. Um, the other thing is, I'm sorry for anyone that has to live in substandard conditions, that's. That's not ideal, and it's pretty heartbreaking, honestly. So I'm sorry for people who've had to live in unsafe housing. Our intention here is for high quality housing. And safe housing for all members of our community, um and these percentages of affordable housing. Um, many of us commissioners have seen examples of these. Types of neighborhoods and how it's done today versus how it was done, you know, fifty years ago. And a person driving by a neighborhood typically would not be able to tell which house was market value and which house was. Deed restricted, um the way affordable housing is done now is um tends to be much more equitable and safe than maybe the way it was done. Um, in previous iterations of land use law, that was not. Equitable or fair or safe for all people in a community. So what we're talking about is something different than what was done in the past, so I just wanna make that really clear, um because our history of land use and. Housing discrimination is real in this country, and um we're talking about something different today. So I just wanna be transparent about that. All that said. I understand in addition. That there is no one solution that the commission is going to put forward that will address all housing. Issues, even PUDs, so um. What we're talking about is this one tool. To work at increasing the diversity of housing, so more of the people that live and work in Livingston today can continue to live and work in Livingston tomorrow. I know that we're not gonna be able to fix everything in one vote, so I just wanna like say that also that like. The numbers, these percentages of AMIs. Matter, and also we're not gonna be able to create all the solutions in this one. This one ordinance, so I'm comfortable with um. Moving that percentage up for this particular ordinance. I think um. As we diversify solutions, we're gonna have to get more creative to. Help the public that's in the lower percentage AMIs. And we won't be done working on it when we're done with PUDs. Um, the other thing I wanna bring up is. This eighty percent to hundred per twenty twenty percent AMI, people might be surprised, the bulk of our population that falls within that. Vice Chair Kayla, I know that you probably know more about who, because you've been worked. The majority of us do, it's probably a lot of people that people might not expect, working in schools or working for the city or working for the hospital. Um, the places that we all count on. Staying open and staying staffed. Many of these people. And their families might fall within that percentage, so I just kinda wanted to lay that out there. Because these are people that will be impacted that we're talking about, it's not just. It's not something vague, um, so I'm comfortable with the eighty percent. I don't feel like I have enough information about differentiating between rentals and owner units. I feel like I would like a little bit more information on that. I'm a little bit um concerned about the unintended consequences of discriminating between renters and owners. I just want a little bit more information. On discriminate, because I think that the unintended consequences of that could be pretty problematic. If we're, if we don't have enough owner um opportunities for people to buy, so what if, what do you all think about raising it to eighty percent, first of all? And the high number being a hundred, well, yeah. Where are you at, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, I'm kinda kind of staff representation for this.
Well, and remembering that there, it's less of a recommendation and it's more of like, this is what they've learned and they want um.
Right.
Feedback from us, you know.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
You're good with raising it above sixty, okay. I don't know that I'm comfortable with the delineation, and right now I feel like I want more information, um this is. Since this packet is the first time we've thought about this. I would appreciate more information from staff and also time to look into it, like me as one commissioner to do my due diligence to look into this.
Yeah, clarification, um. Delineation um order units, do that mean developer units or? Or just making.
Yeah, the um i- i- the the difference is whether the units are really are for sale or for rent. Yeah, and if if I um may just interject the, just for reference, the AMI. Um, currently in in the area is approximately fifty eight thousand dollars, and so. At the eighty percent AMI, that is uh a a family of forty six thousand. Um, approximately, and and a hundred and twenty percent is is about sixty nine thousand.
Thank you.
Good, okay, thank you.
So what, where, are you comfortable with raising the AMI?
This is a gray area.
Yeah.
So man, I must be talk about it, just so I can zero in exactly.
Right.
What it's good to think about, but um. It seems like there's just so much to them.
Do you have anything you'd add, Commissioner Schwartz, or Vice Chair Kayla?
No, I I I would just like to clarify on what you had said earlier about the neighborhoods and really like what. What we're looking at here, you know. These QDs are hopefully going to give us neighborhoods that are mixed and. Types of housing, but also in. The cost of the housing, so that you may have a neighbor. Who has a million dollar home next to a neighbor who has a twenty or fifty thousand dollar home, and that. That's, you know, that's what we're looking at here, so you know, I think that this is. This is the idea to give some flexibility and to encourage flexibility around what those. Neighborhoods and homes might look like. Um, so I think it is really a different way of housing people than it would be of, you know, one big. Unit of. More like a housing, I mean, I think it's a different look, and hopefully we're gonna have neighborhoods where people all live together. In community, and it, there'll be less, you know. I know that, that there was just a a recent uh development done and. Was my called Bridge Review, and. There's quite a variety of housing within that neighborhood, but you wouldn't necessarily know it as you walk down the street. Um, and so I think that that's an important thing. Um, to remember, and you know, and that's the, this. Is trying to encourage is a more effective. Um, community.
Yeah, we don't need Robert Taylor homes, like we had in Chicago, could bring any green and stuff like that. Yeah, this is. I I like the way.
Um, so just, but I. But to get back to. I'm good at that eighty, a hundred and twenty, and so fifty restriction included. Um, but I think it would make sense if we can get you some more information, but I think.
Is that, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable? Alright. Um, the next one is. Uh, number five, increase max allowed density bonus to fifty percent of base zoning district increase from twenty five percent. Does anyone wanna volunteer to go first? I'm. Comfortable going first since they were down to four and I have numbers, yeah, um. I. Appreciate that developers want this density bonus. I feel like we've done a lot recently to increase density. With ADUs and also um. Clarification of the zoning table. Uh, more recently in R two's, I don't know that, I think this would be one of those things where we could maybe. When and if we revisit the PUD, if the twenty five percent doesn't seem adequate, we could revisit it later, but I. Feel like twenty five percent is generous with what we've already done in the last five years since I've been on the commission. So I would not be in favor of this at this time.
I would agree, I I'll agree with that.
Okay.
No discussion.
Yeah, okay. We've, we've just done a lot.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that our base zoning is. Already in a pretty good spot compared to other Montana communities, so. Okay, so I would agree, that's a huge jump. Okay. Also, I think it's clear that the community would probably be more.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Be good with that?
Absolutely.
Carrying on, number six. Cash in lieu for increased open space benefit. This is already allowed for subdivisions. I do have a question on this, if you don't mind. So I'm looking for that table that we just had up, that's on page sixty one. So, I guess what I'm curious is this cash in lieu of. One of our public benefits is increased open space to twenty percent of PUD area. So this seems to sort of contradict one of the original. Benefits in our benefit table, if we did cash in the love. So I'm curious what other commissioners think. Because it sort of seems like we would have two. I- it's like in conflict with itself, maybe? I don't know.
But I would also maybe say that we know. Within Livingston, particularly on some lots that are not developed, that there's. Difficult topography, and so maybe this gives options, one like two different options depending on that. Property. But this difficult topography count as the correct kind of open space for a.
So i- if I may provide some context for the conversation, um. Uh, this was a suggestion, a- and we were really. Uh, a- at this point, kind of contemplating a a maybe a smaller subdivision somewhere in that one to two acre size, and so. If uh i- if an acre is forty four thousand approximately square feet. Um, then uh under our current subdivision regulations, eleven percent of that would need to be open space, which is about five thousand. But you know, if if uh uh an applicant came and and um was getting, you know, twenty percent um open space area. On that um, on that forty thousand square foot parcel. Um, that ends up being somewhere around eight thousand square feet of of open space, and and the conversation really was. You know, is eight thousand square feet of open space um. Spread over multiple PUDs more valuable? Or is um the city receiving that that funding and then actually kind of agglomerating all of those. Um, various different eight thousand, you know, square foot parcels, and then creating, say, a larger park that was, you know, twenty five or fifty thousand square feet. That that could be kind of a a regional park, and so um it it opened the door for that possibility, rather than having. A number of small disparate parks in different subdivisions, if that makes sense. Yeah, yeah, exactly, and possibly could have more amenities, sorry.
No, how would that work functionally, like how would that work that it would be a? How do you get from cash in lieu to a big neighborhood park?
Well, i- i- that that becomes the the work of the city, so we would establish a a dollar per square foot for the in lieu. Um, fee, and then we would have a fund where those um in lieu fees are collected, and then. Um, whether it's vacant city land that we might put a park on, or if if we would actually go out and procure a lot and procure some land. Um, to to create a a larger park.
Chair, my name, um. I wonder too, perhaps, and I think. Miss Seerston brought this up, that potentially that money could also be used for. Trail connectivity or, you know, something like that. To create, you know, we talk about in here less trips, less less car trip. You know, and to be able to use that money to create some connectivity. Between neighborhoods or to commercial spaces so that we are truly creating less. Car trips. Um, I think seems like.
Yeah, I said, well, it's dedicated, that dedicated ones to our control, you know, that that entity, you know.
What do we do now with our cash in the love?
Uh, in in our research, we collect very little if no cash in lieu. So it's, it is not a a well-used or perhaps well-known program.
I feel like it's been the subject of much discussion since I've been on the commissions. I can't remember all the discussions, but it seems like it might be worth revisiting. The commission. Once more, Mr. Schloss. I think it'd be nice to have some clear policy and guidelines if we're going. Not have it go into the, yeah, nervous cloud of monies that, yeah, I. Clearly delineated what it's used for. So that there is a public benefit, so maybe potentially that could be clarified. Um, knowing that. There's more work to do, but if it was, at least we knew the direction we were moving in it, and the general policy. That we were supporting. That that I would be comfortable with that.
But I'm I'm definitely.
Okay. Okay. Alright, so I think we've gotten through the list.
Well, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you, commissioners. Um, we will uh take the the feedback and and continue to. Uh, en- enhance the ordinance, and it will appear back before you.
And it sounds like you're gonna do some more outreach with folks you haven't had a chance to circle up with, and so, um, thank you.
And we will have more talk on that, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Great, thank you. Uh, now is a great time for a break, so I'm gonna ask for a motion for a ten minute break.
Move to take um kind of a recess.
Second, motion by Schwartz and a second by Kayla, all in favor, say aye. We're gonna take a break, see you in ten.
I mean, there we go.
Welcome back. We're gonna pick up where we left off. And that is on ordinance number three zero four four. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, and I mean, chapter twenty eight section. Ten A of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled subdivision regulation by eliminating the fee schedule and providing that. The fees will be set by separate resolution of the city commitment. Mister Gager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Newt's. This is the second time this is uh, before you folks and as you indicated, this is to. Um, uh, in preparation for a, a future action of the, a, a new citywide fee resolution. Uh, the, the team is going through the Livingston Municipal Code. And removing all um, references to different fees and. So we uh, started with chapter twenty-eight. To remove the subdivision fees. Um, these subdivision fees will appear in the citywide fee resolution. And so I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mister Gager. Questions, commissioners?
All right, it's changing, it's the second uh, first reading for me, so.
All right, so how about a motion? I move to approve the second reading ordinance thirty-four four in ordinance of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter twenty. Eight, section X through A of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled subdivision regulations and authorizing the conduct of a final public hearing with words. Motion by Kale and a second by Friedman and now open it to public comment. Anyone in the room? The room only has staff and commissioners for people online. Uh, folks online, you're next. Is there anyone online that would like to give comment on ordinance three zero four four? I don't see anyone that wants to give comments, so public comment for ordinance three zero four fours close, commissioners. Anything to add?
Do not.
I think Commissioner Schwartz said it best already. So nothing to add? Uh, let's vote, roll call please.
Chair Newt's, Vice Chair Kale. Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Motion passes. We'll look forward. To the separate resolutions. Moving our way. Next up. Resolution five one zero seven. Levy in one hundred percent of the cost for street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt's. The item before you is the um, second reading of, of this resolution. Uh, that will set the assessment amount for the street maintenance district. And uh, of note, the total assessment uh, as previously discussed is unchanged from. The fiscal twenty-three assessment level of one point three million. And so um, a- as included here, uh, the, the average uh, residential property assessment. Um, will decrease in fiscal twenty-four from approximately two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, in twenty-three down to two hundred and fifty-five dollars in uh, fiscal twenty-four and. On the commercial side, there are um, similar changes, and so I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mister Gager. Questions, commissioners? No questions? All right. How about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Resolution fifty-one zero five one zero seven.
Second.
Motion by Shorts and a second by Kale. Public comment is open for resolution five one zero seven. Are there folks in the room that want to give comment on this? Nope, I'll look online. Anybody online? Seeing no one online that wants to give comment. Public comment for resolution five one zero seven is now closed, commissioners. Yeah.
Think anybody can argue with, you know, prices coming down and.
I mean, someone might. We have had lots of questions, however, and so. As. We're working through the agenda packet, uh, Mister Gager. Where is a great place for people to reach out when they have questions about what this means for their individual properties?
I would recommend that someone call City Hall and speak to uh, the, the finance office. And if the finance office is not available, I should be.
Great, thank you. So make, hopefully that. That word will make it out in our community since we want people to get their questions answered. All right, so we have a motion by Short, Shorts and a second by Kale. We've done public comment. We're ready to vote. Roll call please.
Chair News. Vice Chair Kale. Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Motion passes. Next up on the agenda, resolution five one zero eight estimating the cost of maintaining lights and supplying electrical current. To special improvement lighting district number twenty for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt's. The item before you again is the second reading of resolution five one zero eight. Which sets the assessment amount for the light maintenance district as you noted and. Um, with this change, the uh, amount in twenty-four is um, a thirty-three percent de- decrease from. The FY twenty-three assessment and so uh, we do expect. Um, that in fiscal twenty-four, the average residential property will be assessed nineteen dollars and thirty cents. Relative to the thirty-one dollars and nine cents that was assessed in um, fiscal twenty-three. And so I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners? So just to be clear, he's going down again in the city of Livingston.
That is correct.
How about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five zero one eight. Oh, five one zero eight, thank you. And then, did I hear a second?
So uh, motion by Kale and a second by Friedman. Public comment. Would anyone like to comment on resolution five one zero eight in the room? Nope, online? Not seeing anyone online that wants to give comment, all right. Public comment for resolution five one zero eight is now closed, commissioners. Thank you. I. I see our finance directors online and I just, the speed at which we are moving through these is not a reflection of our. Of anything other than it's very, very clear. Thanks for giving us numbers on the changes and making it really clear to people. The difference, that's really nice to see that in the packet. So I just wanted to add that. Are we ready to vote? Roll call please.
Chair News. Vice Chair Kale. Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Motion passes. Uh, here it is. The word I've been waiting for, for one year. Resolution five one zero nine. Modifying special improvement lighting district number twenty by replacing streetlights and other appurtenances. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Through twenty twenty-four. Mister Gager, can you please spell appurtenances and use it in a sentence?
Thank you, Chair Newt's. The appurtenances on those light fixtures certainly are extraordinary in the city of Livingston. A P P U R T E N C E S? Gets me every time.
I, I, it would get me every time.
Can you use that in the sentence?
Thanks for playing along.
Absolutely, Chair Newt's. The pleasure is all mine. Uh, the item before you is to um, set the final assessment amount for. The appurtenances in the light maintenance district and again with the, the, the prior item. Um, I will note that the um, the burden on, on residential properties uh, is expected to decrease in fiscal twenty-four. Um, relative to fiscal twenty-three and I will stand for any questions, questions you may have.
Any questions?
No, man.
Yeah, all right. So how about a motion?
I'll make motion to approve uh, resolution five one zero nine.
Second. Motion by Shorts and a second by Kale. We'll open it to public comment starting in the room. Anyone want to give comment? We have a member of the public. Who wants to, I, I did have to ask and I'm wondering if Ms. Grapo is going to use it in a sentence.
Having attended city commission meetings for twenty-four years now. I have to say that this is a breath of fresh air and one of the things that consistently people have complained about. Is the lighting district and, and so the fact that it's going down is pretty. I don't think it's ever happened before. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Patricia. Uh, folks online, is there anybody online that wants to give comment on resolution five one zero nine? I don't see anyone coming off mute. So public comment for resolution five one zero nine is now closed. Commissioners? I would like to thank city staff. Finance Director Federhoff for making this gen item fun with including that large. I'm guessing she's the one that brings a smile through her ear with this. Thank you. Anything else? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Uh, roll call please.
Chair News. Vice Chair Kale. Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we are moving into action items, commissioners. These are actually more discussion items tonight. Um, I don't believe we have any actions to actually take, but we may need to offer some feedback, so. First up is an update on the community wellness center project, Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt's, and I um, wanted to come back to the um, commission. Uh, as you know, the um, city has been working with the Four Ranges um, Community Recreation Foundation. And uh, on, on um, possibly replacing some of our, our aging uh, recreation infrastructure and. Um, a- as part of the um, possible project to uh, construct a wellness center. Um, there was uh, talk of creating a special district. Um, that would extend beyond city limits and, and um, share the boundaries of the Park County High School District and. Um, unfortunately. Uh, uh, in, in mid-August, the county commission um, decided that uh, th- they did not feel comfortable. Um, asking voters to opine on the creation of a special district outside of city limits and so. Uh, I and uh, members of, of the city staff have been working with the foundation uh, for the last several weeks to. Um, identify a, a path forward um, for the project uh, in, in a manner that is. Um, accomplishes the, the goals um, that were identified in the, the community needs assessment. Um, but is also uh, affordable um, to the, the taxpayers of the city of Livingston. On a, on a sustainable basis into the future and um, and, and i- is able to, to really generate the revenue. To um, that, that it needs on a self-sustaining basis without um. Overly burdening the general fund. Uh, a- as you know, the resources in the general fund are, are finite and so. Um, ensuring that the, the, the center is both affordable and sustainable. And it's, and it's funding is um, I think important to uh, to maintaining our, our budget moving forward and so. Um, I just wanted to let you know that, that those continue, those conversations are continuing with the foundation. And uh, and with the, the capital funding partners and I will stand for any questions. Um, you may have on, on the project. Uh, a- again, to, to be clear, we are evaluating. Uh, the feasibility of a, a city-only district to fund the operations of, of the wellness center. Um, those, those evaluations are ongoing with the project team.
Thank you, Mister Gager. Thoughts on opening this to. Similarly, it's the last time, public comment first and then we can talk. Seem like that works for you, that process, okay? So that worked for the commission as well? Okay, so the first thing we'll do is we'll open, we'll open this to public comment, remembering that there's no action that we're taking, we're just going to be offering feedback. To Mister Gager. So we'll, we'll start with people in the room. Is there anyone in the room that wants to offer a general or offer, excuse me? Public comment on the update that they just heard? From Mister Gager? Come on up, Patricia. And then we'll go online next.
I just wanted to say that um. Uh, see, many comments about making this more affordable. Is certainly everybody I've talked to because that, that is. Foremost in their minds. And. Um, so I appreciate, appreciate that, the nature of that conversation I had. Talked with the city manager also about some of the extra things that. Is going to be required and I had told him about. Bosun Trail. Which is a grant. That we looked into um. When we did the Bosun Trail Connected thirty-eight thousand dollar grant, which was a US Forest Service grant. Which would actually take a trail. From basically the public works. Office or even. To the highway. All along Front Street, all the way to Star Subdivision. And. Really to Northern. Had and M R L had agreed to three feet. South of Front Street. That they would allow us to have as a bike path. So that Bosun Trail grant at that point was seventy-six thousand dollars or the grant money. Which would have covered the entire. Um, bike path. So that would. Possibly uh. Reduce the amount of sidewalks or anything else that the city would have to come up with on that. It would allow people from the hospital. Actually to have access, I advise. To go to the, to the wellness center and also have people at the Star Subdivision. Have access to the wellness center. Through a branch rather than having the city, but with the money for that. It's just something that has. Been either working on, or McGee actually worked on to. For a long period of time. But certainly appreciate the fact that this is a. Looking at something more affordable, was really appreciated.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, folks on, oh. Right, I was just checking to see, I heard somebody comment. Folks online, is there anyone online that wants to give comments on the update? Not seen anyone? So public comment on action item A, update on community wellness center project is not closed and we'll turn to the commission. Commissioners, who would like to go first? I am aware that you had some comments at the special meeting when I um, was out of town. Is there anything that you wanted to add at this time or refuse?
Let somebody else go. Well, no, I, I'll start.
If you want, yeah.
I'm. Really worried. That. I know Mister Gator's been working hard today. With the, the foundation and stuff. To make this happen. Yeah, the biggest. Comes down to me. You know, to move forward to maintain this, I mean, to the citizens to maintain this. We have such a wonderful opportunity here to do something and. It's like every time you turn around, you get, you know. it's like every time you turn around, you know, you get a roadblock, you know, especially the county commissioner, which I still cannot understand why they would at least let the voter, go to the voters to consider, you know. They just, you know. I'm very disappointed with them in in that regard and uh but we'll do the best we can. I I know we're working, I know grants working hard as possible can as long with it, along with the board members. With the Four Rangers, so. Hopefully you see the movement. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? Nothing from. Okay, Vice Chair Kill.
Well, I I'd like to thank Mr. Gager for working through diligently on this and and sort of uh spinning and and you know, going in a different direction. Um I've seen some change. Seems like we might be a little bit on our timeline here, right, to sort of get my decision actually something forward uh particularly around some of that funding, is that correct?
That is correct, and and we are working with those funding partners really to understand some of those timelines and and limitations. Um and and to see if we can craft a plan that um that meets all of those.
Well, thank you for the pivots. We're going in different directions to try to figure this out. Obviously trying to find something that is affordable for the community um is utmost, so.
Yeah, um. I would start by saying um thank you, Mr. Gager. I'm aware that this project, when it was initially designed, was really um a partnership. Um and the intention was it for to serve uh a good portion of our county, if not all of our county, and that was its intention and its design. Um with the scale and size and also you know, back when we interviewed you, I'm aware that this was not part of your interview process. So obviously, it wasn't a project that was at the front of mind for the city commission at that time either. And I know it's taken up a significant amount of your bandwidth um to provide an opportunity for the voters of Livingston to make a decision on behalf of our community. So I just want to really say that out loud. Thank you for um doing what none of us, you know, really saw coming um on a commission back when we hired you. Um. Second, with that in mind, I guess that it was really designed for city and county. The feedback that I've heard from city residents since um the changes in participation when the county opted out um is that people in the city are still really thinking about the swimming pool and the future of our pool, knowing that it stays our number. People that use the pool or pay attention to local government are aware that um there's some significant challenges with our pool, then it's not sustainable to um you know, keep it forever, that there's a lifespan on infrastructure. And also, at the same time, people are very concerned about um the city residents carrying all the weight for the project as it was created or as, you know, it was presented to the county commission. So I think there's a lot of concern and worry with city residents about a couple of things, one being um are they gonna be expected to? Is it all or nothing for them? They're worried that if they, if 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 not this, does this mean we will have no swimming pool? So there's some real sort of fears, I think, in our community. We need to like discuss to alleviate. I I just want to make sure people know, I believe it's the intention of the commission um with whatever happens in regards to the Wellness Center, that our conversations are not over regarding the swimming pool. And whatever the decisions are from funders, that our our work is not done as a city, um the commission and the staff to figure out how to serve our community through recreation facilities. So I just wanna make sure that's on the record for people. Um I do also have concerns about sustainability, like other commissioners mentioned, like, is this something that we can afford? How will it impact um taxpayers in the long run? I don't think any of us want to see something built just to have it sit empty five days a week because we can't afford to keep the doors open. Um. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns in that community right now, since that vote with the county commission. Um thank you for continuing to work on it and thank you for, thank you for sharing honest answers with us, with us, even if it's not um you know, what people most want to hear is that we have like a a magical solution that solves all the problems in one vote, which we know is difficult, but I appreciate your commitment to seeing if you can find something um making it work. If you can find a solution, a workable solution for this and knowing that um if if not now, then later we will find a workable solution for the people in Livingston that works for local government that we can afford and that works for staff. So um anything else you would add? Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm yeah.
Please, jump in.
Um I recently had a bad fall and I've been under physical therapy, which I I stopped last week. When I grew up in Central New York, Syracuse, New York, we had Y M H A, Y M C A, we had five different wellness centers. And I don't know if this generation is uh was a big thing in fact, then with a variety of of all kinds of things. And uh so right now we offered the community that the old place right now, this is the place to walk. And these things are very important. So and so this thing to me is an important issue, and I don't know if the younger generation was born of this thing, but that was a big, it's a big thing and it shouldn't stop as far as the philosophy goes. So uh it's, I'm interested where we're gonna end up with this thing. There's a lot of money involved and things like that, but uh the idea to me is important that we follow through. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's there where we stand. Do you feel like you got?
I I did, yes, thank you. And 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 please know, this was as much to to keep you informed on on the progress that that we are uh working on a- as at a staff level, um because I know this was a a large initiative uh for for the last ten months or so that I've been here. And so um di- did want to at least formally report back to you folks.
Yeah. And would you agree to that, like? I I just really, I feel like we can't underscore it enough for the community that we're not gonna be done if that the the city of Livingston is not done um regardless of the outcome of the Wellness Center, whatever funders decide to fund, that we're not gonna be done doing the work to try to serve people through our rest department.
Oh, absolutely. I I think we've been fairly consistent on that throughout this conversation that you know, e- e- even if this was, you know, ultimately put to voters and and not approved, the city of Livingston has uh a responsibility to to care for its recreation assets and to provide recreation assets suitable to the community. And and you know, quite honestly, we've got a great staff and a great team down there and uh and they serve the community well with with what little they have. And so um yeah, I'm I'm excited to to uh figure this one out um for for that team and for the community.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate you saying it again. I think um people are worried because they also agree with you about the recreation department on all the things and want to see it successful and see our, see these community members successful as well. Anything else? Are we ready to keep keep rolling?
Boom.
Alright. Um next up is the discussion regarding advisory boards. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt's. Um I I appreciate the opportunity to uh have a a little bit of a conversation on on some of the city advisory boards and and their function. Um in my ten months uh as city manager, I have had the opportunity to attend um just about every meeting of of the city advisory boards um and and many of our statutory boards as well. And um you know, it it is my observation in in that time that um I I think the the public engagement process and and level of of public participation in the board process is is low. Um there are a great many meetings where um quite honestly, there are no members of the public other than the the appointed board members. And um and at a a staff level, we went through and and just did a a quick review of the last year's worth of meetings. And um a- and I would say the average, average public attendance uh at those meetings is is less than one member of the public per meeting. Um and it and it's, like I said, often times there are no members of the public. Um in addition, there are some some areas where um the the current function of the of the boards um appears to to deviate a bit from some of the authorizing and enabling language. And so um you know, as as I am uh here and uh I'm familiarizing myself with city operations and uh looking for areas for improvement um or or alteration. Uh I I will say the advisory boards um are one uh area that has come to my attention. And 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 I could envision some um some possible changes to how those boards function um and and really how the city functions and the city interacts with the community. Um certainly, I think when it when it comes to uh conversations about our our parks um and our urban forests, I I I do think that there are things we could do um a- again, a little bit differently that that uh achieved the same outcome and the same goals, um but probably in a little bit of a different way and and with a bit more public participation. So um I I uh welcome the conversation and um appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um how about we do public comment again first and then I'm sure we'll all have things to add. So let's start with people in the room. Is there anything that folks getting to know from the public in the room? I'm gonna look to people online. Is there anyone online that wants to chime in on this topic, offer comment on this topic? I am not seeing any. Okay, it's a quiet bunch today here in Livingston. Um so public comment on the discussion regarding advisory boards is closed, commissioners. Um. I'm happy to take a turn first again, since so um we don't have to always make it that's who was over. But I I I first would um reminisce that when we did interview Mr. Gager, this is one of the topics that was coming up was um boards and effective engagement with boards. I I, since I've been a commissioner for five years, and I know some of you have been commissioners longer than me, I've been hearing feedback from boardmen from board members on all boards, even boards I don't serve on or have never served on. Um that folks are sometimes frustrated that they don't um that maybe sometimes, you know, there's not as much as, there's not a lot to talk about at the meetings, there's not always things to move forward. And then also um sometimes the way, sometimes, let me start over with that sentence. Because of the way the boards were set up, um and this is crystal clear to me now, seeing the full history of some of these boards. I thank you for including all of this. Some of this, I did not know the origin story for these boards, and it's the first time I've seen some of these documents, and I tend to do a deep dive all the time. Um the boards were not set up to be advisory boards to the commission. They were actually boards set up to work with staff. But the boards were created as boards advising the commission. So it has it it's now apparent maybe why there's been some sort of tension and um less effective communication than there could be if the boards had been set up more appropriately from the beginning to work with the executive branch. And so I think that there's a lot of clarity to maybe why people are frustrated today with something that's created twenty years ago with a different intention. And I understand that our government has changed and our staffing has changed. And so I think it makes sense that we update our advisory boards to be contemporary with today's city government as opposed to the government from, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, um since it's a different city in some ways. So I guess that's the first thing I would say is um thank you for initiating the conversation. This is something that we brought up during your interview. I appreciate that you took a lot of time to to really see the boards. I appreciate that you have been going to meetings and that staff has been going to meetings. That's something that people have been asking for for a long time is more access to the executive branch. So thank you also for showing up. Um I think that's very meaningful to the people on these boards as well. They're happy to get to know you and staff. So I would start with all of that. I think it's time for the conversation. Um. I would I would say, you know, the commission, we've had conversations about things like goals and roles before. I think it might be nice if we thought about like, what is our goal with advisory boards? Um because maybe starting there would help us uh clarify what an improved process might look like if we're not achieving those goals. And then the other thing I I would ask us to consider is the roles, like who should be doing what? Does that make sense? So like some of the confusion I've come across over the years. And Commissioner Schwartz, I'm sure that you've heard some of this too, so I would, I would love to hear your thoughts. I mean, I want to hear from all the commissioners, but I I feel like you and I have heard some of the same things with um confusion about process, like agenda packets, who puts it together, decide what's on an agenda and it um things like that. So I think all of these things are things that have created frustration for the public and for the people on the boards. And then I would offer that we have had good turnout at some meetings, and I would point out that those meetings were project-based. So the planning board is an example. When we were working on the growth policy, we had incredible public engagement, but that was very much centered around a specific project. And the same is true with like certain topics, like say uh certain subdivisions that have great public interest. Like anytime there's a gas station, it seems like people want to talk. If there's, you know, it's by the interstate or there's a gas station. So I do think that there's good engagement and it's a focus um and clear conversation on what people can talk about. So perhaps that would like inform us on how we want to um other ways we might consider engaging with the city. I'm gonna stop talking now. That was a lot of words. What do other people think?
Well, I would say, you know, I think the one thing that I I worry about is that we do have some really great volunteers in our community who sit on these boards. And what I would hate to do and which I, and what I think is happening is, is that you know, we're asking them to come out potentially to one meeting every month where nothing is happening, and I don't want to waste their time. Um I want to make sure that we're using them to the best of their ability, you know, using, and they have they're such knowledgeable people in this community and people who show up for these boards and want to make sure that we're using their time wisely and that we're getting the most out of them for for our use. It sounds verbal, but you know, if they're gonna show up, like, let's make sure that we're we're having them show up for the important things, right? Like, let's not waste their time. People's time is valuable and um and for all of those folks are, they're giving it. So let's not waste people's times to show up to a meeting or you know, put something on their calendar and the day of the tour, it gets canceled and then they could have done other things that they didn't schedule work hours or could have gone to triple family or whatever it is. But I think it seems important that we figure this out so that it's, we're using their time effectively. I would also like the staff's time to be used effectively for the taxpayers. I mean, I don't want us wasting taxpayer dollars for staff to show up to a meeting and make it's canceled. That that's what can make any sense either. Um so I think that we could be creative about how maybe we look at this or or how how we schedule these meetings or do them as often so that we're getting the most bang for our buck.
Just to be clear, because now all the public that's watching might not know that we've had over the time since Mr. Gager's been here, we've had uh we're seeing more cancellation of cancellations of meetings, lack of a quorum for meetings, or something happens and a meeting is
Right.
But it it's called off at the last moment. So I just wanted to
Yeah, thank you.
context for what you were saying, yeah. Other commissioners?
Um yeah, I'll just make comment, you know, like the U R A um was meeting monthly, but statutorily or by law wise, they only have to meet quarterly. But you know, they were doing it monthly because there's a lot of stuff going on, but that's uh probably
Right.
And you know, maybe that's something that we should look at on these boards as well. I need to meet monthly. The tree board just seems ridiculous. I mean, you know, it that that'd be tedious. And and same with the conservation and and parks and trails as well. You know, unless you have, because like you said, if it's project specific, yeah, then there's time, you know. That needs to be put on, but it's otherwise it's boring. I mean, that's, there's, you know, we're not still you know, so does I time every month with something where you don't even do it or you don't even have a quorum for it. And then um, along with that, you know, consistent bylaws, I think each advisory board should have same bylaws and everything else. You know, for clarity sake, doing everything else, the same rules. I'm not sure if that, how that is with the statutory board, but that's something. But right now we're at we're on seeking city managers specifically looking for the advisory boards at this moment.
Right. Yeah, because the other ones, there's
But I mean, that can be cleaning up.
Agreed.
Okay, that's all I had to say.
Yeah, I agree. Did you want to add anything?
Is this working at all?
I think it seems like, well, that's what we're trying to figure out. Did you wanna?
Good question, Mel.
Yeah, I think that um some of the boards are set up by state statute.
Yeah, right.
So those have a clear purpose and it's outlined in state law. It sounds like the advisory boards based on the information we have um we're not sure if it's working. Yeah, what are your thoughts?
I think they're necessary. You know, when I first started, I was on the tree board for These are all important subjects where you got people narrowing in just on a narrow area. So the idea is good. The follow up and how things should happen and some reporting that if it's not happening, it should, you know, enforced somehow. But I think, I think the total picture is that we need that input. The city manager can't be involved in them and all these things. But it'd be good if you had the information of, oh yeah, you know, hers is a nice report. And these people are thinking about some good ideas. We could something to look at. And I think it's critical in the end that we figure out some kind of a system for that to happen. That's why I say I don't know where it sits right now, what kind of information you're getting. But uh, I think it's an area there, it's it's important, I think.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reflect on what I heard from the commission. And then my hope is that you can tell us maybe some thoughts you have after listening to us. So um, does that sound okay with everyone? Okay. So some of what I heard, just kind of going through the comments, is the frequency of meetings we might consider. How effective the frequency of meetings are. Sounds like quarterly meetings is reasonable. For example, as an example, that it works for some boards.
Yeah.
Um, consistency. So the way that we're engaging or the bylaws or whatever, whatever the process is having more consistency, so which makes sense. So the public knows how to engage.
The members.
Along with the members, yeah. The input of good ideas is critical and we can't lose that. Like we need to have a mechanism where people can be giving ideas to you as the manager, because we can't expect you to come up with everything. So that sort of reflects Commissioner Friedman and then um, that we need to be thinking about efficient and effective participation, both from the volunteers' perspective and also from the staff's perspective. And then what I was talking about was a little bit like maybe we need to clarify goals to reduce frustration and then also clarifying rules, which I think is a reflection also of a bit of what Commissioner Schwartz was saying, clarity on and making it consistent. Do you have any thoughts? Um, if not now, we can revisit it later. I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, no, I I I certainly do. Um, yeah, I I I think you folks uh appear to understand the issue very, very well. And and so I I think conversations about frequency of meetings and and also, you know, the the conversation about the success of of certain project-based boards um and project-based gatherings. And so, you know, to the extent that that, you know, we we move in that direction, I think probably would make the the function of the boards a bit more successful. Um, and and I guess, just as I think through that, um, you know, I while recognizing that we need to kind of maintain a a flow of information from the community um to, you know, my my staff. You know, I I I could imagine, you know, probably some seasonal meetings. Um, you know, like when I think about parks, you know, that's a very seasonal part of our operation. And so, um, you know, perhaps a a community meeting, you know, in, you know, probably March would be realistic and to get feedback on, you know, and and also provide information on what to expect for the parks and changes. Um, it also would fit into the budgeting time as well um to to get some community input as far as um, projects to to include in the coming budget and and get some other feedback about how the parks operate. And and you know, what people would like to see for um for the coming summer. And and then similarly, you know, just working through that example there, I could imagine it would be um beneficial to the team, to my staff as well to to hear from the community after the park season is kind of wrapping up. So in that, um, you know, kind of September, October timeframe, um, you know, to have a some sort of community meeting um, where we, you know, get feedback on on what worked in the parks, what didn't work in the parks, um improvements that that folks would like us to contemplate for next year. Um, so that way the team could kind of go back over the winter and, you know, kind of ruminate on on what we've heard. Um, and then bring some proposals back again at that springtime um meeting. So just kind of thinking through the process, that seems like you know, just at least with the 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 one board there, Parks and Trails, that might be. And and trees, you know, I guess are are seasonal as well. Um, and and with kind of the 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 city's um tree planting program. Um, you know, that that kicks off in May again. So you know, a seasonal kind of community meeting related to trees and the urban forest. Um, may maybe beneficial, just a- again, kind of thinking of ideas here on the fly as we're talking.
I mean, I'll respond and if you're ready, unless somebody else wants to jump in. I like the idea that um I like the idea of the public engagement around issues, seeing how the farmer's market has worked. And the, we get different people when it's project based. Then, and I mean, it's great to see the same people also, but it's also nice to see additional people in addition to the same people that we normally see. Um, just to sort of hear more ideas. I also like it being incorporated into budget conversations, because it seems like a meaningful way for people to influence the budget directly with the executive branch to maybe even before it comes to the commission, like there's an opportunity for the public to really to really influence government directly. Um, I really like that, offering people lots of points like you, and I think this gets to what Commissioner Friedman was saying with getting ideas straight to you. It doesn't always have to come through the commission. People can also just talk directly to staff. I know this is a different idea than what people are used to, maybe in Livingston, like maybe we haven't historically done this as much, but I am open to it for sure. Just increasing public engagement in lots of ways. Um, I do given our challenges with reaching quorums this past year, I know this is cyclical and it's happened in the past. On my early days of the commission, this happened regularly and then we were doing fine for a few years and now we're kind of visiting again. I am worried about if we're doing it twice a year or and that happens to be a day where we don't get a quorum, then what does it mean for the fifty people that showed up? So how do we navigate that? So that we don't find ourselves in a situation where a meeting has to be canceled, since that's been one of the reasons meetings have been canceled?
Well, I definitely think, you know, with well, you know, planning, planning far ahead, you know. We should, you know, you know, alleviate that to some degree of it, would expect. Otherwise, you can without a quorum, you can still have the community involvement, but you're just not gonna make any decisions, or they don't anyway, but
I don't know.
The advisory boards, but.
I don't know if you can have a meeting without a quorum, can you?
No, no, no.
So the meeting would be canceled.
Yeah.
Well, I, so I I would think, you know, you're only doing two or four a year or whatever, you know, that you would schedule those out far enough and you would just have people have to make commitments. And if they're not making commitments in the meeting, then
Time to give. And then, and there's remedies.
Yeah, we, there's
To remove a number.
Yeah, so I would suggest and that, and and I would say potentially those bylaws would need to be looked at and that number would need to be adjusted.
Sure.
If you're having less, less meetings. I mean, that, but that's all you could do. I mean, if you're gonna keep up a board, you know, like that would be, and I you know, I I would say like I'm on the health board, you only need quarterly, you know, ish.
I don't remember all the statute, shocker, but um, I know that I'm trying to remember, there's some boards that are and I don't remember the difference between them, but I know there's different, a different mechanism for uh legislative boards than executive branch board, boards. Um, and there's a different process, a slightly different process for appointment. But I don't remember all the details, because I I don't remember all the details, but some of these, if they're actually more executive boards, there would have to be some changes made, because if we're talking about people influencing the executive branch and these boards are set up as legislative boards. I I think there's something there and I don't know all the details. I think there's something statute that we'd have to I don't know what to ask, because I don't know what I'm getting wrong right now or what I'm forgetting. Do you have clarity on on that part about how the boards are set up or the bylaws or what the differences are between the branches, boards?
Uh, yeah, you know, I I would, I would say if if we are contemplating some, some large changes um to the function of of boards, certainly there would be some updates to the municipal code and and the bylaws. Um, because these are, at this point, um, at least trees and parks and trails are set up as advisory boards to the, to the city commission. And and so whereas conservation actually is set up slightly bit differently, which is more of an executive um advisory board and and so it doesn't exist in Livingston Municipal Code. Um, the the bylaws were adopted by you folks and and it was created that way. And so um, uh, yes, there there may be, um, if we are moving from a policy um advisory board to more of an operational advisory board, I would suggest that we would want to update the municipal code to to reflect that. Um, and and so, yes, the the way that members are appointed and and the board functions would change in that way.
Yeah, my memory of the executive boards too is that they were project based when we did them. And I, and I remember when we set up the conservation board, it was, and I it was about the energy action plan.
Right.
Which we're gonna address a little bit differently, since it hasn't been worked on. So I think there could be some, I think going back to the goals, like what's the goal and function of the board and
Right.
And then um I would like clarity on that. I I guess as we move forward from city staff and then also clarity on roles. So this idea of making it consistent, like Commissioner Schwartz was saying, um, consistency of roles too, I think could be useful for the public.
You know.
Right. Yes. So it it makes it easier for the public to engage too, when they know what to expect. Okay.
And also what works, what works best for the staff when it comes to these, you know, well, you know, right now, the advisory board.
You know, particularly if we're talking about executive branch boards now, like we can't be making all these decisions we're gonna need. Yeah, yeah. Do you think that this is something that you, are we ready for this? That you could bring back to us at some uh, um, future date? I guess there's a couple other things I would offer. In addition.
Please.
I did, um, we had this municipal summit here. I don't know if you all remember. There's a bunch of governments that came around that was hosted by the league of cities and towns. Um, they still do board trainings. So I mean, for the boards that are not advisory, for the other boards, um, they still do trainings. And we've been talking about that for years, doing board trainings. I learned that Helena's doing it and they're making them mandatory. So if you want to be on a board, you must do the training.
Very good.
Yep, it's something we could consider. Is that, it sounds like
Be optional.
Sounds like
We, yeah, we're getting close to that before.
Yeah.
When we had this discussion.
Okay, well, it sounds like the city of Helena is doing it and perhaps um they'd be willing to share information is what Ashley told me. So perhaps we could see what might be appropriate for Livingston and then what that looks like. The other big change that's happened because my day job tracks some of this, is there's an opportunity for a joint board through one of the statutory boards. Um, they changed the law around planning and zoning because some communities were having similar issues where
Right.
Things that to make it more efficient, because not all governments, we have different demands around the state, but there could be an opportunity to potentially combine planning and zoning.
We did have that.
Yeah, I know we've gone back and forth and now it's down from the state as an option. I think we can opt in.
Yeah, I think that.
And that's one of the, one of those boards, it's one that we've had a hard time reaching a quorum. And so
Right.
Do you, is that information you could bring back if, if there's a recommendation from staff? So we could explore if that's a good path forward?
Yes, certainly, if if um, if the commission is open to that, uh, we certainly would be happy to explore that. As as you pointed out, there was a uh legislation passed this year that that explicitly uh enables um combining those boards. And so, um, we'd be, we'd be happy to bring that back, because as you pointed out, um, you know, the the zoning um commission specifically has been one that was difficult to to get a quorum uh at times this summer. And um, it did, it did delay the the work of the the P U D ordinance a bit, making it up to you folks. And so, and and as we look at the, you know, P U Ds and and the possibility of those moving forward, having you know, similar membership on the planning and the zoning boards, um, may actually make that process a bit, a bit smoother um, from a staff level as well. So.
Yeah, as, the reason I'm bringing it up too is it fits within the theme of what we're talking about, good use of time and also by law, there's certain timeline requirements that developers have rights. And if we're delaying the process, then it's a risk to the city. And so I'm also considering like, we don't want to make ourselves we don't want to make expensive mistakes when there might be a path.
And see, that was, that's why we separated those boards, because we weren't breaking the law at that time, or we weren't, you know, violating the rules. So, but I like seeing it come back together, because eight timeliness and stuff like that. It just, you know, one more damn bore, you know, just with the population of eight thousand. But we're very lucky that we have the volunteers that we do.
Yeah. Yeah, and I I think it goes back to what Vice Chair Kale was saying, is we have all these people and we want to use our time.
We don't want to waste their time.
Right, okay. I feel like this covers a lot of conversations we've been having over the last few years. Is there anything I'm missing or we're missing?
I don't think so. I think that's enough to go on.
You feel good about this too? Okay, do you feel like you have enough from us that you can work on something and?
I I absolutely, yeah, I I appreciate the direction, um, commissioners. You know, we've, we've, uh, yeah, brought into the scope a little bit, but I I think in a productive way and and so I appreciate the conversation.
I'm not expecting, uh, well, I guess in the meantime, where are our boards at in the meantime, while staff is working on this? Because I also don't want to be duplicative. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. So like where, what, what should we expect for our boards? What should they expect? What are we thinking timeline wise?
Well, um, I know, I I appreciate that. I I, we will work on, certainly on the advisory board um issue. You, I would say very quickly, um, and um, so as not to prolong, you know, kind of that process and and leave folks in limbo. Um, we will, we'll work on this and and seek to bring back some, some ordinance and bylaws changes here uh in the coming months, absolutely.
And will board meetings continue? I know that's been a question is.
Uh, yes, I I, you know, I um, I I I think to the extent that they're needed, we will um continue to I I I think to the extent that they're needed, we will um continue to to schedule meetings when there are items to be discussed and and topics to to work through. Um I'm, I I don't know that I would call for a moratorium on advisory board meetings at this point, but.
Thank you. Okay, so you'll just keep us in the loop and you'll keep the boards in the loop on.
Absolutely.
We were, thank you. Are we done with this topic? Great. Great, thank you. Thank you for, and thank you to all the people that pulled all this history together. I hope that. The public takes time to read it, it's pretty interesting to see the history of these boards and how they have changed over time. And folks can still reach out on the website and give comments if stuff comes to mind and they want to offer it to you. And so, right, all right, so next on the agenda. Let's have the time in notes. Um action item C, which is closed session pursuant to Montana code annotated two dash three dash two oh three. For A, and I'm going to make a motion. To enter into closed session to discuss both personnel matters and litigation. Pursuit pursuant to Title Two, Chapter Three, Section Two Oh Three of the Mon- Montana Code Annotated.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Newt and a second by Kale. All in favor, say aye. So motion passes four zero and um. There won't be any action associated with this.
No, uh no action is allowed in closed session.
But we will come back out of closed session for manager and commissioner comments after, so if folks are online, just know that you'll be like put into a waiting room. And you'll be brought back in and people in the room will be asked to leave, but they can come back in when we're done, so. Thank you. We'll be back. All right, so we're off mute.
We are off mute.
And everyone's back in the room.
There.
All right, so we are. Now to city manager comments.
Thank you, Chair Newt. I uh would like to thank everyone for their time this evening. I appreciate it as always and um. Uh I'm looking forward to a a fun September of community events and welcoming all the kids back to school and so, uh thank you.
Thanks. Next up, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Friedman.
Okay, I I missed this, uh what was the?
Just comments, we're wrapping it up.
Mission recommit.
Do you have any, do you want to? That sounds good.
Vice Chair, yeah. Thank you for a entertaining evening and thought it was a great conversation this evening. Um and yeah, thank you, uh. Mr. Gager, for all you do.
I will say, thank you, Vice Chair Kale. My work took me away from Livingston for a while, which is always sad. Thank you for, it's been a while since we've had a chair meeting. Thank you for clearing the meeting, so I was, I appreciate it. Um and thank you for showing up to get a forum, commissioners, that's great. I also want to share, um a few weeks ago, right before I left town, um. People wonder like what's so great about living in the city, so let me tell you one thing that's great about living in the city. Um, this is a huge shout out to our water department. A few weeks ago, I went home and there was all this water under the underpass at a strange time of day for no apparent reason. And when I got home, my kid said, Mom, why don't we have water coming out of our faucets? And I looked around the corner and the water department was fixing a broken main. And. Within a few hours. We had running water again in our house and it was clean. And we could drink it. And I didn't have to make any phone calls, I didn't have to find. Contractors that work on pipes. I didn't have to do anything, it was all taken care of by city staff or on the job who noticed a broken water main before I even noticed having water issues in my house. And so people wonder what we pay for being in the city, what the point is, and that is a wonderful example. In addition, when I was on my travels this summer, you may remember last year, I also talked about how water impacts were happening all over the state. Still happening. And I am here to report that the city of Livingston is doing great, in case you didn't already know. Some communities are struggling with clean water. Some communities are struggling to even staff their water department. And some communities are on boil orders for their whole town. I asked Mr. Gager this afternoon, when was the last time we were on a boil order? And he said, I don't know, and I said, that's great. That we don't even know, because it's been so long. So I just feel super grateful. To the city of Livingston and especially to our water department after seeing other water departments that are struggling and are seem to be doing so well. That people often don't even know that problems exist in other places, so please pass that along. I'm guessing they don't all watch us, but I want them to know that I appreciate that I don't have to make phone calls about water. And I bet lots of other people in town do too. It's really exciting. Except clean water.
It it's incredibly important to our life here in Livingston and I will pass your words along to the team.
Like boiling water for a whole week, like for your family. I, yeah. I am, it is so good to be in the city.
I've watched those guys do that subzero cafeteria.
So good to be in the city of Livingston, we're very lucky. That is what I want to be there. Yes, I think that was, um thank you for hearing my comment. I think it's a comment worth sharing. So. I think that's it. Motion to adjourn.
Well. You're gonna make a motion.
So move.
I'll second that.
A motion to wrap it up by Friedman, second by Kale, all in favor, say aye. Four zero, motion passes. The city of Livingston meeting is adjourned at eight forty eight. Calendar, if you will. Good night.
Just I just table clocks, just the table clocks and the.